Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our last meeting of two thousand and twenty-three. It's been an incredibly exciting year for this council and for all of St. Thomas. And we're happy moving forward into two thousand and twenty-four. This is the forty-seventh meeting of the one hundred and forty-third Council of the Corporation of City St. Thomas. And first I'll ask, are there any disclosures of interest from any of the members? Seeing none, we'll move on to minutes.
I have a motion that the minutes of the meeting held on December the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three be confirmed. Moved by Council Herbert, second by Council McCauley.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried.
Next order of business, we have a presentation this evening. Members will present a civic award to Mr. Ken Nash if he could come forward. So the council and Corporation of the City of St. Thomas proudly present the good citizen individual to Mr. Ken Nash. Ken has selflessly and on multiple occasions picked up, disposed of, and reported drug paraphernalia, paraphernalia and needles around the city of St. Thomas. The service that Mr. Nash provides helps keep our citizens, children, and the public service workers safe.
Ken, I understand you're going to pick up. I follow Ken every day on social media, too. So we know that our community is safe and he just, um, I was worried that he wouldn't come tonight because he's kind of humble. And I thought, no, we're going to get him to come and accept a civic award from the city of St. Thomas. And a pin that says the same thing. Thank you. As our city continues to grow, community supporters like yourself is exactly what we need in our community. And we need you to keep showing the people out there that it's okay to say, yes, I'll go out and help my community. And we need you to keep doing it, too.
I'll be there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next item.
Council will now resolve itself into committee the whole to deal with the following business. First committee this evening is strategic direction and development. First item relates to heritage designation of the property at one fourteen Metcalf Street. I have a motion that reports CCO seven twenty-three relating to the heritage designation for one fourteen Metcalf Street. Be received for information and further the council direct administration to prepare by law for its consideration to designate one fourteen Metcalf Street as a heritage property under section twenty-nine of the Ontario Heritage Act. Moved by Council Wookiee, seconded by Council Kohler.
Questions or comments? Council Herbert.
Thank you, worship. Obviously, this is going to be approved, but if the persons who own the building say six months, but all want to change their mind and not be heritage designation, can they do that?
I think the designation goes through, but someone can always ask in the future about undesignating. Council Peters, you may know more about that than me.
Thanks. We're happy to clarify that. A building in your old neighborhood in Elma Street, the old Elma, uh, Pres- Elma Street Presbyterian Church had been designated. And the building came into such poor state of repair that the owner asked for it to be de-designated. And council granted that. So it's, uh, there is provisions in the Heritage Act for it.
Further questions or comments? I had one, and maybe Council Peters, you can help me out with this, too. I think it was ten Center Street that had, that had kind of gone through the same process. And we asked at that time, has the owner of the building said they would like this to happen? And I thought council had kind of directed that we would get that type of notification on a, on a case like this. And I've read through the, through the report and it kind of says that, but do you happen to notice the owner want this to happen at, on Metcalf?
They, they do.
Great.
Plain and simple, the, the owners requested that their property be designated.
Fantastic. That makes it much smoother for us and, and way to go. So further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carry.
Next item relates to draft plan a subdivision for the Yarmouth Yards Industrial Subdivision. I have a motion that reports PD fifty-two twenty-three relating to the draft plan of subdivision for the Yarmouth Yards Industrial Subdivision. Be received for information and further that the application for approval of a proposed draft plan of subdivision file thirty-four T two-three five oh three be received. And further, the council direct staff to begin circulation of the application in accordance with the requirements of the Planning Act and Ontario Regulation five forty-four slash oh six. Moved by Council Clark, seconded by Council Gibson.
Questions or comments? Council Peters?
Thanks, worship. I have a few questions on this that I'll direct to staff. One is, why wouldn't we be bold and look at a residential component to what's going on out there? We've got thousands of jobs that are going to be created, thousands of more jobs that are already in the industrial area. And why couldn't we look at designating a portion of the subtly part of it as high-density residential? People could walk to work. They wouldn't have to drive to work. So that's one of my questions is, is why? Why are we just focused in on industrial and, and try and do something different? Because we know that there's going to be a huge influx. And what a better way to be able to get to work. And, and that ties into, why, why are there no? Why are we not seeing any linkages on the draft plan of designating corridors or trails for pathways? That could potentially interlink into other things in the community. Why not set those things in place now instead of trying to fix it down the road? Let's let it be no one up front. And the other is, is, is why aren't we looking at green space apart? There's a portion of Ian Beggs land that was hived off twenty-odd acres. That's going to be preserved. But why wouldn't we be looking at trying to create some green space components within this development that are potential amenities for people that, that work out there? That they could walk out and enjoy a nice picnic in the afternoon for a lunch break. So, and I'll, I'll come back to street names in a, in a moment. So those are some of the points that I'd like to raise. Thanks, worship.
Mr. Pompilly, are you our guest speaker again this evening?
Through you, worship. Yes, I believe I am. But we do have, I believe, on the call, a representative from our industrial development team as well. If there's any questions for him, he can, he can assist. But happy to, to, to try to address those questions for you for all of council. So I'll start with the first one, the residential component part. I don't really, I kind of struggle with the, the idea of adding residential within an industrial land. Those, those two mixes, just those two uses generally are conflicting uses. You usually don't have a residential use within an industrial area. Residential uses are sensitive land uses. And, and by allowing those types of uses within industrial park, you can limit the ability of some potential industrial operations, especially larger scale industrial operations from wanting to locate there. Because there are specific requirements that they can't be within a, a certain distance from a residential area. And the prime example is, is, is the main anchor of this, of this industrial park has, has some of those restrictions in terms of that, that residential units, dwellings cannot be within certain proximity to those uses. So they're generally conflicting land uses, which is why we, they're, they're, they're not included in, within industrial parks. And then there is some proximity to the balance of, of St. Thomas, some residential area where there are those opportunities for people to walk, bike to, to this area. The second one is trails, and that's a great question. And there definitely are going to be trails, trail linkages within, within this, this subdivision. When we report back, we'll be glad to highlight those for you. We have, we have easements located throughout this subdivision that will be, that will be used for multi-use trails for employee and for the future employee, employees of this area to use on their lunch hour to, 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 they'll be connected to the, the balance of the city. The road systems that are going to be built within this area will also have right-of-way components that include multi-use trails. So there will be a network of multi-use trails here. And Mr. Buckmont can, can, can further elaborate on that as well. And also with regards to parks and open space, the, this subdivision has several mega storm ponds, swim ponds that are, will be located throughout the development. And those ponds will provide a bit of open space components, trails in and around them, linkages to them. So there will be opportunities throughout this industrial park for that. I don't know, Mr. Buckma, if you have, if you wanted to elaborate on any one of those three points, happy to hear from you.
Yes, thanks, Lou, and through your worship to Council Peters. Yeah, so we are planning quite an extensive multi-use trail network through the, the industrial subdivision. We're planning for a very wide right-of-way and within that right-of-way, a three-meter-wide multi-use path network along all the roads and also taking advantage of some of the Hydro One corridors through the site there and also doing some trails along the Hydro One corridors. And we're working with Hydro One to make sure that those trails are, are pre-approved and we can get those in as well. So quite an extensive network and, and also this being planned and also connections back into the city system. So for example, on the west side of the site, as we get towards Highbury at Dennis Road, we're planning a crossing there for multi-use trails coming through the swim pond blocks, crossing Highbury there at the, at the signal that's at Highbury and Dennis, then integrating it into our trail system into the city along Dennis, possible future sidewalk or trail project along, along Dennis Road in the future. So yes, that's been at the forefront of our planning for the site is to make sure we have some great connectivity through there.
Thanks. I'm, I'm going to go, you may as well stay on, Nathan. I gave you the heads up on this one. But for, just, I would just comment. I look at Burwell Road. The west side of Burwell Road is full of residential and the east side of Burwell Road has industrial. We're just approving a new industrial adjacent to it. And I just think that this is a real opportunity to be bold and do something different with an industrial development, but I'll agree to lose that one. Our street names. I, I, I would like to see us, your worship, focus in on, I like a number of the street names that are there, but I also think that this is a bit of an opportunity for us to leave our mark on what we want some of the streets to be named. The street list exists of exist of street names. There's some others that I can think of that one is, there's nothing in this that recognizes those settlers that laid out those lands in eighteen thirty-one. They all came from a particular area in, in Devon in England called Holesworthy. I would love to see us have something to recognize the heritage of the site and Holesworthy could be a good one, but there's, there's others. We can't use Devonshire because we already have a Devonshire. Why can't we honor some people that have helped build the community like a Bodre Boulevard? You know, Moore's Bodre was a longtime employee from the city. It's not unprecedented that we haven't named streets after individuals. Shyne Palmer, former industrial commissioner, countless mayors have been recognized with streets. I think of another trailblazer, a former counselor who had a keen interest in economic development. Helen LaFrank. You know, why not LaFrank Lane? To recognize Helen and her contribu- the, the contributions that she made. I certainly like Edison. I think Edison and there's a great Elgin County connection. In fact, Thomas Edison's grandfather lived in Vienna and Thomas Edison used to visit Vienna. But why not recognize Tesla as well, too? And cause our own Edison and Tesla debate. I like the electric theme, but I would just like to see us take charge of some of the street naming. Thank you, worship.
Thank you. Further discussion or comments? Seeing none on the report, all in favor? Any opposed? Carry.
Next item relates to community improvement program. Background and impact on housing and investments. I have a motion that reports PD forty-two twenty-three relating to the community improvement program. Be received for information. Moved by Council Baldwin Sands, seconded by Council McCauley.
Questions or comments on the report? I have one if I, if I can, Mr. Pompilly. This is a great step forward, and I know you and I have talked about community improvement plans really over the last four years and how we morphed to where we are today. I guess what I'm looking for, and, and you tell me if it's possible, is more of a menu of what community improvement plans can be on, on, for each of the areas of development around the city. It used to be the community improvement dollars could only be used in the core for facade improvement or housing improvement. We've expanded that now to have our community improvement plans available for across the community, including in industrial zones for certain things like brown fruit, brownfield removal and such. But I can't tell you what each would be or what, whether it's a pick one from column A or column B or column C. And I know over a couple of the apartment building applications, we had you and I had those discussions. Can you, um, maybe give us a little in faith, information now? And if not, you know, promise I can get you a better menu as to what's included in our community improvement plan?
Through your worship, yes. I think any time that you can improve a document that you have, a policy document like this that you have, that's full of incentives to promote rehabilitation, to promote new investment, to promote new housing and to promote job and employment creation is a good thing. And, and if you can communicate that out in terms of how, make it more user-friendly, I think that's an even better thing.
Right.
And I think we can, we can certainly move in that, towards that direction. I know we have targeted throughout two thousand and twenty-four to make improvements to our, our, our website as one of them. And, and that's one of the things I think that we can do is, is really incorporate this document into our, into our website to make it a more user-friendly document. And that's, that's something that certainly we'd endeavor to do. And we're always prepared to kind of bring forward any improvements or suggestions or ideas to, to increase or, or change some of those available incentives. So always open to that, happy to do that. One of the things that I committed to do to our committee members in the CIP was to, to do sort of a year end. And this was, this was kind of like a start to it, but it, it kind of incorporated all the, just focused on residential. But I think on a yearly basis, I think something that we're going to endeavor to do is sort of provide a summary of all, all of the CIP applications in terms of what was applied for, what was awarded and what the results of those were in terms of investment and, and number of new units or rehabilitated units. So that's something that, that, that we do. And I think, I think those will, getting that information out there will also be, be helpful and help sort of flag this to residents that, you know, this is something that City of St. Thomas is, is, is doing and, and having some success in it.
Council Clark?
Thanks, worship. Through you to Lou. Just wondering what, whether or not we, we reach out through mail or whatever to say absentee landowners and building owners on Talbot Street and make them aware of the program by through mail. And the other, the other question I had was just whether or not the, because the cost of building materials and, and projects has increased so much, are we still relevant or do we need to review our limits and increase those to make it more attractive? So more people will be on the uptake?
Mr. Pompilly?
Through you, worship. And those are, those are great questions and, and great initiatives. The absentee landlord, once certainly it's, 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 it's something that we, that we can do, but it's something that we're also actively doing. We have, uh, whether it's staff from our fire services department, property standard staff, building inspector staff, bylaw enforcement staff that are dealing with issues on, especially along Talbot Street. One of the things that we do as part of that is, is an education component. And we, we advise them that there are these programs available. You know, we're seeing that, gosh, the, the address is escaping me right, right at the corner over here. Across from, from, from City Hall, we're seeing that investment happening now with a new owner who was advised of these programs and they're, they're going to avail themselves to some of these. So those are things that we could be doing. A mail-out though is, is a great idea. It's something we could take back and, and see if that's something that we can do, even through our downtown development board to make, make people, property owners aware. So definitely something we can do. And as far as costs being relevant, I don't think there'll be anybody in the community that would object if we increased the amount of cost. But I think the fact that people are applying sort of gives an indication that, you know, the costs are relevant, the, the value that we're, that, that they're getting is, 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 is good. At some point, we may have to look at, at, at increasing some of those because like you said, the cost of materials are going up, the cost of labor is going up. It's a small drop in the bucket, but it is a, it, it does help with the bottom line. But that's something that if we, maybe in futures budget cycles, as we're giving updates on the CIP, if those are some things that we are hearing from residents, home builders, that it's helpful, it's great, but we need more. That's something we'll bring forward to council to, for consideration, for sure.
Further questions, Council Baldwin Sands?
Thank you. Through you to Mr. Pompilly, if I could, please. I really appreciated this report. Thank you very much for its content. I like the idea how you put the focus on how it improves neighborhoods, how it improves the streetscapes. One of the things that links to it as well is the entire mural program that has been developed. And we are getting so many people as a destination to walk our neighborhoods more frequently. I also think that this whole thing with the CIP program gives us in the city of St. Thomas, the attitude that we are open for business. And I think that's something that is really not emphasized enough. And I also believe that this whole program does encourage small businesses to return to our downtown. So going out through the DDB, I think is a great suggestion. But I also think that it's a great way to get small business attention, to get focused on our downtown. For me, the piece that's missing and one of the things that I've been able to advocate around the horseshoe many years ago is how the CIP program increases our tax assessment. And that was missing in the report. So I would be looking forward to seeing something like that in the future, how the enhancements and the building of the properties and the streetscapes, et cetera, making it more attractive. But as a city, we get an increased tax assessment in the future because more and more people are utilizing some of the businesses downtown to be able to create new businesses in our downtown as well as other places. Thank you.
Further questions? Council Herbert?
Thank you, worship. Well, I've been involved in the community CIP program for quite a few years with Lou Pompilly and Terry McCauley. Now, and I'll join the team. I always get excited when I see someone makes an application and Crystal Penny, I cannot help but mention her, the great work she does. When they submit an application for some renovation on Talbot Street, boy, that, that always excites me and anything we can do as a council, as a, as a, as a group to encourage them. I mean, it's not make or break it for them, but they do get X number of dollars. And I think that's a real nice touch for those people want to put money in and we're willing to give a few bucks back. So, and I think it's a great program and thanks, Lou, for keeping us on the right track all the time. So thank you.
Further questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Pompilly. That is carried, by the way.
And next item, your worship relates to revision of the zoning bylaw to add inspection fees and review weight restrictions for oversized vehicles in residential zones. Have motion that report PD fifty-six twenty-three, twenty twenty-three respecting updates and fee changes to the zoning bylaw. Be received for information. Moved by Council Wookiee, seconded by Council Clark.
Questions or comments? Council Wookiee?
Thanks very much. Just a comment. I just, I love it when we can update bylaws to make them relevant, like trying to, trying to say that something is disqualified because its gross vehicle weight is absurd. Like, I mean, what are we going to do? Get out with their weight scale like? And, and also over the last twenty years, those big RVs have become half the weight. So you could have a massive thing in your property that still is under the gross vehicle, gross vehicle weight. So I want to applaud staff for updating this and I just, I like when I see this because I want to keep things current. And so we can have the best-looking community we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Great. All of us in favor? Any opposed? Carry.
Next item relates to an application by Doug Terry Limited for temporary removal of part lot control. I have a motion that report PD fifty-seven twenty-three relating to the application by Doug Terry Limited for temporary removal of part lot control for semi-detached dwellings on lots sixty-four to sixty-six on Plan eleven M two sixty. Be received for information. And further that the application by Doug Terry Limited relating to the passing of a bylaw to temporarily remove part lot control for those semi-detached dwellings be approved. And further, the council authorized staff to prepare a bylaw pursuant to section fifty sub seven of the Planning Act, which provides that section fifty sub five of the Planning Act relating to part lot control does not apply to semi-detached dwellings on lots sixty-four to sixty-six, Plan eleven M two sixty. Sorry, moved by Council Herbert, seconded by Council Gibson.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carry.
Next item relates to the fourth report of the two thousand and twenty-three Site Plan Control Committee. I have a motion that report PD fifty-eight twenty-three relating to the site plan application numbers SBC ten dash twenty-three, SBC twelve dash twenty twenty-three and SBC fifteen dash twenty twenty-three be received for information. Moved by Council Wookiee, seconded by Council Gibson.
Questions or comments? Council Clark?
Thanks. The one twenty-one South Edgeware. I just wonder if there's been any update through discussions on the number of parking spots on that property?
Do we know anything further till it comes back to us? I guess this is site plan control, but it'll come back to us at some point. Or not? I, I remember in the application also to site plan control, it was was asking for twenty parking spots and it had nine, and I thought that was a significant difference in numbers.
I believe that, 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 that went to the committee of adjustment for a, a minor variance and the minor variance was granted.
Council Wookiee?
Thank you very much, Mr. Pompilly. I don't know if you know this off the top of your head. At Fairview in Wellington, the development is going in there. When you see that, when I saw the pictures of it, I was, I was trying to get a handle on where the parking is, where the entry will be off the road and how many parking spots are there. It might have been the report. I apologize if I didn't catch that. But I know that they've asked for reduced, reduced setbacks in a number of things. And I, it's quite a few units. And just visually, when I drive by there, I think, wow, I am really interested about where people are coming in and out of that and what the parking sit is. Thanks very much.
Mr. Pompilly, too?
Yep. Through your worship. No, good question. It is, it is a tight site. I believe the, the zoning was approved originally by, by council for that site. The, the parking is underground, so below grade parking. And the, the, the number of units is thirty. I think originally when council dealt with this, this site plan, this approval, it was twenty-nine units.
Right.
And they were, and they were providing twenty-nine spaces as well, so one per one. They added another unit. They were able to kind of squeeze things out, out of it. They, they, they applied for the necessary relief to the bylaw to add an additional unit plus an additional parking spaces. So it's, it's one parking space per unit and the access is off of Wellington. And the parking is under, below grade.
Go ahead, please. Thank you. Now, I just having, I, I don't live far from there. And I think if you're visiting this site, you've got no parking anyplace nearby if you're, if you're a visitor. Is there any visitor parking or is it? I'm sorry again for, I should know this, but when I just drive by, I'm like, wow, that's, um, that's going to be, I mean, it's good. Don't get me wrong. Like, that's exactly what we're supposed to be doing. But in terms of just those things that Those things that, you know, if you're a visitor, what are you going to do about that? Thank you.
The parking that's provided there is that is at the rate of one per one per unit. I I don't, I'd have to go back and apologize. If there's if there are some designated spots and therefore for visitors, but. Generally, the parking for visitors would have to be accommodated somewhere offsite. If not available onsite.
Counsel Gibson?
I realize it's private property, but when there isn't there a bylaw where they have to designate for accessibility parking though?
The the building code does require accessible units and accessible parking. So some of those parking spaces will be accessible.
Further? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Your worship, that concludes the items on the agenda for this committee unless there are any items from the members. Seeing none, we'll now move into community engagement and services. First item relates to the new twenty twenty four. Children's Services Transfer Payment Agreement and Childcare Updates. Have a motion that report SESS seventeen twenty three. Relating to the new twenty twenty four Children's Service Transfer Payment Agreement and Childcare Updates be received for information. Moved by Counsel Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counsel Kohler.
Questions or comments? Counsel Herbert?
Thank you, Worship. Well, it it's a great report for sure. And a lot of information, but on down near the end on page twenty one, I think it is, you talk about. You continue to struggle with recruitment and retention. And then you even had to shut something down, which was okay, I think. But my my question is. Recruitment, are there not enough? People working in the field to are we not paying enough now because everything is so increased the last two or three years? And what was the third part of that? That was. Yeah, and you need qualified people, obviously. So but anyway, the the first two recruitment and retention, I just curious for your thoughts on what can we do to help you?
I'm not sure what we can do. We have been trying to, I apologize, sorry, I have a bit of a sore throat. We have been trying to recruit and retain. It is a challenge in all industries, including childcare, particularly in St. Thomas Elgin. For those programs that are before and after school programs, like one of the ones I identified there. Those are, we don't necessarily need qualified staff, but we are having very difficult time trying to find staff that do those split shifts. So it might be from seven thirty to nine, three thirty to six. With regard to paying them more, with the Seawalk system, Seawalk system, the Canada Wide Early Learning Program, we are limited in how much we can offer. In wages for for staff. The ministry has just provided additional funding, but again, it is for qualified staff only. I believe the last time we looked about province wide, sixty percent of staff, sorry, sixty percent of staff are qualified in our community. It's a little bit less. We have more unqualified staff working in childcare and those staff are not able to access any of these extra. Wages that were provided by the ministry. So there's lots of things that are working against us. What we have done. Is done a large campaign on the media to recruit and retain. We provide bursaries for those educators that want to go through Fanshawe College. We've had some success with that. We're going to continue with that. We're promoting and we're working with the entire province to promote the sector. I believe that there is a campaign that is coming out through the ministry to support to support the sector and to encourage educators to go into the program. But but it is definitely a challenge and. There's a lot of competition with regard to people working in childcare who then want to go to a different industry because they are paying more. And so that's what happens is that, you know, staff are hired and then shortly after they leave because they find another position. That is paying more because yes, things have gone up in price. We are trying to work really, really hard to support the educators that are working in the programs, but to support those programs to try to keep staff. And and that is our goal, but it is an uphill battle right now.
Okay, go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you for that question. The the childcare center on St. Catherine's, is it full now with kids?
It is not full because they do not.
So is that the reason why you don't have enough staff?
Yeah, and so they are going through recruitment process as well. And again, it is, it's competitive between childcare centers as well to trying to find. If you are an early childhood educator with a qualification, you can handpick where you work because there are so many positions available, but yes, they are struggling to. To find staff. We could fill that center if we had staff, but it has become a challenge.
Just one last follow. Is there a big waiting list now?
Yes, there still is a large.
That's sad, isn't it? Kids can't go anywhere.
It is very, very sad.
Anyway, you guys do a great job. So thank you.
Thank you for saying that. I appreciate that.
Counsel Wicky?
Thanks very much. I just wanted to Counsel Herbert and and colleagues and people out there. So I want to stress that when we were at AMO this summer, we spoke to the ministry about this exact issue. And it's an issue province wide because there are certain. Childcare providers who simply pay more and and it's it's province wide. They recognize it's a problem and I'll stop right there.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
I just wanted to add a comment to that as well. I think that the biggest challenge that we have is is supporting those educators that don't have the qualifications. They are the ones that are holding our system up right now and supporting and doing what they can. And unfortunately, the ministry is not really focusing on them. They are focusing on the qualified staff, which is very important. But they need to make sure that so when you go to, you know, your next meeting with AMO is to really highlight that because that's important.
Excellent.
Thank you so much for your questions.
Thank you. Further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Your worship, that concludes the items under community engagement and services unless the members have any further items.
Seeing none.
We'll move into infrastructure and civic operations. There's nothing on the agenda unless there are items from the members.
Seeing none.
Will now move into corporate governance and administration. First item relates to municipal property assessment corporation. A data sharing and service agreement. I have a motion that report TR twenty one twenty three. Relating to the municipal property assessment corporation data sharing and service agreement be received for information. And further that a bylaw be prepared, authorizing mayor and clerk to execute the data sharing and service agreement with the municipal property assessment corporation. Moved by Counsel Gibson. Seconded by Counsel Wicky.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Unless there are any further items from the members under corporate governance?
You got one. Counsel Wicky?
Thanks very much. Counsel Herbert and I had the pleasure last week of doing some training through AMO that the city was going to pay for on competing human rights issues. And it was a fascinating one. And my cold note summary is that we had lawyers, they were lawyers on and they went through the rules, they went through case studies. It was very valuable in terms of how we look at things. And just as a quick summary. It was interesting how they say just because somebody feels uncomfortable with the situation does not mean their rights are being violated. So this was a very. This was not a fluffy feel good. Session. This was really good training for three hours on how to view these things. And if anybody on the council wants to know a little bit more about it, I'm sure Counsel Herbert and I can share with you what we gleaned from this. So thanks to the city for letting us get trained. Thank you.
Questions, others? Other items? Or questions or comments of Counsel Wicky because he doesn't get any? Seeing none, next item.
Counsel, we will now reconvene into regular session. I have a motion that the recommendations, directions and actions of council. In committee, the whole is recorded in the minutes of this date be confirmed, ratified and adopted. Moved by Counsel Kohler, seconded by Counsel McCollie.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
No reports of committees this evening. We now move into petitions and communications. First item relates to a resolution received from the municipality of Chatham, Kent. Regarding an increase in accommodation rate payments, social assistance payments be increased for recipients of Ontario Works. And the Ontario Disability Support Program assistance. The next item is a letter received from the Downtown Development Board. I have motion for that letter that the letter received from Earl Taylor, Chair Downtown Development Board. Regarding a consent application by CN Railway. For the property at Station Street be referred to the Planning and Building Services Department. Moved by Counsel Gibson, seconded by Counsel Kohler.
Questions or comments? Counsel Clark?
Just whether we've had any update or any any further talks with them on on this project.
Mr. Pampelli, I know you've been trying to speak with CN about this and.
Through your worship, no direct discussions with CN, but what what staff have been. Attempting to do is, and we've we've. Reached out to a lawyer, we we wanted to get it, we wanted to get it. We're endeavoring to get a legal opinion on the status of the order. And that'll help us in terms of planning our next steps forward. So we're just in the midst of that. But there's been no direct discussions with CN at this point.
Okay. Counsel Clark?
So they can't move forward until they've heard from us then. We would have to.
Mr. Pampelli, is that your interpretation is mine? They've asked us for permission to do this, I think.
The consent has been deferred, so there's no action on the consent. So there's been no decision on on the consent.
Okay. So that was a motion? Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Next item is a letter received from the township of Clearview. Requesting support for the administration and management of abandoned cemeteries that are transferred to municipalities. Your worship, that concludes the petition.
Counsel Peters on that one?
Your worship, I I would like to see us support this and and send a letter as well, too. I think this is a good read for. Anyone on council who. May not be a hundred percent supportive of the. The funds that are provided to the St. Thomas Cemetery Company on an annual basis. But this is a very good wake up call or reminder that should that cemetery ever be abandoned. It becomes our responsibility. That cemetery. So I I think it's a good read and I think I would like to see us support this and send. The appropriate correspondence to the municipality and the ministry. This is a a big issue and a it's a huge liability that potentially is out there for the city.
Your worship, I have moved by Counsel Peters. Seconded by Counsel Gibson.
Further discussion on the direction? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
If there's no further items under petitions from the members, we'll now move into unfinished business of council. If there are any items from the members. Seeing none, your worship, we'll now move into new business of council.
New business, Counsel Baldwin Sands, please.
Thank you. I would like to let my fellow members of council know about the Home for the Holidays event that we've been talking about. On Friday, December the twenty ninth. And it's going to. One of the. Items on the agenda is to give out the scholarships to our medical students. They are as follows, Patrick Akers, Cole Gordon, Patrick Sharman, Daniel Black. Brian Melbrecht, Brandon Bauer, Catherine Montith. And Catherine Montith is an international student, which is one of the expansions that we've done to our scholarship program this this year. So I look forward to seeing all of the medical students connecting with them as well as connecting them with our health recruiter. And our new health recruiter and look forward to having the fellowship, the food and the networking opportunities. I would also like to thank the donors of all of the. Gift bags and door prizes that we have for the event. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Counsel Baldwin Sands, for that. Our health recruitment is a very important piece to us right now. So. This is working out well. Other new business? Well, I've got a number of them, so. Put your put your seatbelts on. We're ready to go. First of all, last Monday, we had a a great group here from both the province and from PowerCo. To recognize the finishing of the land preparation on our industrial site in the Armith Yards. An exciting day to see some of the executives from PowerCo make it here. We also had an opportunity that day to recognize that event. But also to visit their new offices in what was the old. Marriott Call Center or Van Pelt's, whatever, or Canadian Tire. We can go back a number of years on that building, but what a beautiful job they've done at. Making offices in that space for the current employees in town from PowerCo. I think we're at just under twenty. At the moment of people who are starting, who are now PowerCo employees. Now working in the city of St. Thomas on different things like the building of the building or HR and hiring. And it was really unique to talk to some of the new employees from PowerCo Canada that reside there, and there will be many, many more. That come and reside there, but how excited they were about being in downtown St. Thomas. Each of them mentioned to us a favorite restaurant or a favorite place to go and. And we think that's that's another significant reason of why we reached out to try and attract PowerCo to come to our community. We thought, well, that's a great big industrial site, but there's a going to be a number of administrative people who come to Canada and PowerCo Canada will be. An integral part of PowerCo International around the world with with St. Thomas being their largest site. We're going to see a lot of administrative and non battery producing personnel from from PowerCo here in St. Thomas. So that was a very good day last week on Monday. And we woke up Tuesday and said, we've got to pack and get and because we were heading to Germany. Your Director of Economic Development, your city manager and I went to Germany on Tuesday, although Air Canada was. A stretch to get us there. We we did eventually get to Germany and to to Frankfurt where we then drove over to Wolfsburg. Where Volkswagen's headquarters are and and spent a two full day period of time. Visiting with our our friends from PowerCo and from Volkswagen. And I'd like to just share a little bit of it with you because I think it's significant, some of the relationships that we're making with with our with our friends. So the first thing we got to do was on on the Wednesday morning was. Kind of be greeted by by Frank Bloom, the the president of PowerCo and and a number of other members from the executive team. And then they were having as as we did on. Monday here in St. Thomas, speaking to the town hall of the Canadian employees. A little bigger town hall with the PowerCo employees in 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 Salzgitter. And they let the mayor of St. Thomas have a little bit of time with the microphone and we talked about how we joined the family and. And how it will be an incredible international family of all of the places where PowerCo is in the world. So it was great to have have that as a start with us. We then visited the construction site in Salzgitter and that is. Truly, if I can explain it to you, the Volkswagen engine plant in Salzgitter is a incredibly sized. Facility. But now next to that facility and taking up part of that engine plant in Salzgitter is PowerCo. So inside what was the old engine plant, it's still producing a lot of engines, by the way, but they have a timeline as to how they will quit producing engines. Was the lab that discovered the how how to make. The unified cell battery that we'll be making here in St. Thomas. And boy, that that lab facility is beyond science. It is just that need of a place to see. But outside of the the old engine plant, as I'll call it. Is now what's under construction is a two cell facility. For PowerCo. Where are the St. Thomas facility will be six cells. So this is about a third of the size of what will be built in St. Thomas. And this place is massive. I really can't wait to see how this fits on our site. I guess what's what shocked me the most about the building of the the building of the. The battery factory attached to the building that will be become also part of it. Is how high it is. I mean, you know, we all look at factories and we all think they're all fairly standard height. This is about four stories high. Along with being. Just. A lot of square meters. So. The the other neat thing we we saw that day and in talking with the with the with the laboratory and the employees of Volkswagen. Who currently make Volkswagen's engines in that plant. And how many of them have already swung over to PowerCo, the new battery company. And so that tells us a lot about the corporate culture. We learned a lot that day about the corporate culture of Volkswagen. That what might have been different in 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 other major automotive companies. The engines aren't going to be needed anymore. But they're making sure there's a path of workforce development path for all of the employees in that plant as the other plant, as the battery plant starts to finish. There there's all or they stop a line of of engine production, they move over to the PowerCo side. So it's. It's it's quite unique to see. The corporate structure of Volkswagen and PowerCo and how how impressive they are in the treating of their employees. So we talked a lot about about that. the corporate structure of Volkswagen and PowerCo and how impressive they are in the treating of their employees. So we talked a lot about that too. So as I said, we had a guided tour of the laboratories and then we we had a conversation about standard, the factory and what that will look like here in Canada and the types of hiring that would be needed. Then we had a tour of that engine plant and it's, you know, the tour was called a plant in transition because there was lots of space in it where that plant was transitioning to the next life it's going to have, which is really quite unique to see. And then what was next? Oh, and then we, of course, we met with HR, we talked about hiring and the different steps that PowerCo was taking and about a visit even from Vanshaw College to there to see what the training, development and standards will need to be as we start to ramp up into both the employees PowerCo will need next, but also what would be needed on the, in the factory itself as it goes to open. So some workforce development work that's really quite ramped up already in PowerCo. And we're happy to say they're really having great conversations with us also about what the future looks like and how we can do that from a local employment point of view. Then we went on to sustainability topics with Volkswagen. And I think we were most shocked by this number. We got to see a battery recycling facility and had a bit of a demonstration. But some of the numbers being shared on the sustainability of batteries is, it shocked me. They told us between 90 and 97% recycling rate on batteries. So, and that's one we've been being asked here by a lot. What will happen with old batteries when they're done? Well, they have three, they have really two paths. One is the batteries can go to another facility and actually be used. Once they reach about a 60% recharge rate in a car, they're no longer good in a car, they can't charge your car to go far enough. Those batteries can be removed and go for another use. We talked, I think, a couple of weeks ago about a battery facility in our own community, a power facility. Some of those batteries can actually go there and be used for that. But once they're no longer chargeable there, they can be completely dismantled and somewhere between 90 and 97% of all the ingredients inside that battery can be used to make the next battery. So I was quite pleased to hear that. We also talked under that sustainability piece, what it means to build batteries for a million cars a year here in St. Thomas. Now, the batteries from here will be transferred to a lot of places around the world, but you can just get in your own mind, take a million cars off the road and make them EV. St. Thomas is going to be the center of that sustainability and environmental good that will happen. But to also hear that a million batteries a year are being produced and maybe 10 years later, those batteries will come back and be completely recycled, but it's quite a cycle. It's really, we've been asked this a lot in our own social media and we've been asked this a lot from our neighbors. And we can now say, we feel really good about where this is headed and how much it can be. So we'll talk some more about that. You know what we did after that? Yeah, it's, wait, we rested. No, we did not. We went and visited Mr. Frank Klingbeal, who is the Lord Mayor of Salzgitter in Germany. And what an incredible man he is, a fun guy. And he and I compared councils and a bunch of duties and other things together. We had a really, you know, candid conversation. He has 45 members of council. So I wished him well. I said, I have the eight best in the world, but I wouldn't want it to be nine. It'll throw off the balance, right? But we had great conversations about, from him, about what it's like to be the mayor of a community where Volkswagen is one of his largest industries and he's quite happy with how the engine plant in his community is moving over to be PowerCo. So we asked him about becoming our sister city and we'll continue that conversation. And we think all of the PowerCo cities should be connected from a sistership point of view. And we think if it's always going to be Mayor Frank, we'll be pretty happy with him. He was a hoot, so. And then, because it was only eight o'clock at night, we went to dinner with the members of the PowerCo board and talked about what their stresses are like as they're busy during this time putting out billions of dollars after billions of dollars to build new plants around the world with no revenue source within the next couple of years, right? So it's, this is a committed board of Volkswagen's to PowerCo to make sure that happens, that the plan carries on the way it is. Boy, they love to talk about St. Thomas. They're quite pleased perhaps more about the, how good the relationship building that we've done. And so that's been a big part. So I thank you all for what we've been able to do and not get in their way of what Volkswagen and PowerCo want to do in Canada and North America. What did we do next? The next morning, we went and toured the Volkswagen plant in Wolfsburg. Now Wolfsburg's a pretty good-sized community, but Wolfsburg has about 60,000 Volkswagen employees. It is a huge industrial complex that is all Volkswagen. And it's, we saw just about every model that Volkswagen builds and every, and maybe you'll see a picture. I got to stand beside an engine from the engine plant in Salzburg from a Bugatti that they still build 19 of a year. This thing has got 1,500 horsepower. So they're still into big engines too, but they will move, they will move forwards. We got to see the Volkswagen working and then then we also went to the Volkswagen Academy, which is their training center that is part of the Wolfsburg plant. With really some drastic difference on what are you being hired for? How are you getting on-boarded? What training pieces they might put you through in order to be a good Volkswagen employer or well-oriented Volkswagen employee. So it's really quite a unique concept to see. And we're happy to say we'll accept a great deal of what they're doing there in our training structure. And then we saw more training. And then an overview of the Volkswagen group. And then lunch. Boy, that was a lot for the morning. And we went, and Volkswagen is a big part of the city of Wolfsburg, but we went to a place called AutoStat, which is something that the Volkswagen company gifted to Wolfsburg as part of a world fair that was happening in Hanover. But it is an incredible walking automotive museum. Mostly Volkswagen, of course, but not, there's a Porsche pavilion that's part of Volkswagen, a Skoda pavilion that's part of Volkswagen, all of the different companies in Volkswagen. But incredible, if you're an automotive buff, it's something you should do once in your lifetime. It's go see AutoStat. And then they gave us 15 minutes off before we had to pack to come home. But I'll be happy to answer any of your questions we had about the trip. Councillor Baldwin Sands.
Thank you. I have a question, comment, and then another question. First question is in regards to the size of the battery plant that you went to see is one-third of what we are going to have? So ours is actually going to be a jumbo version of that?
I think we should call it that. It is. And I'll ask the city manager, because I know Mr. Dyke isn't on here tonight, is I was shocked by how big that one was when I knew it was going to be a smaller version of what we're building. But it is a huge operating construction site. So, yeah, go ahead.
And then when you were in Wolfsburg, because I've tried to do as many virtual tours of Wolfsburg and of the area as possible, did you have an opportunity to see the types of structures that VW and PowerCo itself support within the city of Wolfsburg itself besides the factory? Can you tell us a little bit about what you were able to witness?
I will tell you, there's, because they are the major industry, if they're not the only industry in town. So that that makes a big difference. There's Volkswagen signs on just about everything in town, whether it's the hockey rink or the soccer field and those types of things. It sounds like they're quite supportive in that type of endeavor. And but as I said, AutoStat may be their crown jewel. It was, I think we, there's a toboggan hill for kids. Of course, it wasn't free, but they could toboggan, there's skating on the canal, there's all these things that were happening at AutoStat. So Volkswagen is the biggest industry around in Wolfsburg and they, and they do a great job of showing that. Go ahead.
So to emphasize, they do give back greatly to the community.
It sure appears, as I said, how they treat their employees and how they treat their communities is exactly the culture that will match St. Thomas well. Any other questions? I'm happy to share with you here or later. So I'm, but we had, it was a bit tough from how fast we were going and how much we saw, but the younger members of our tour did a far better job of dragging the old mayor along. We did okay. All right, that's all the new business I had. Wait, that's not all the new business I have? No, because before we meet again, we have Christmas. So I do want to say Merry Christmas to all of the council and all of the directors, all of the staff of the city of St. Thomas. But if we can also say Merry Christmas to everybody in town. All of our supporters, all of the cheerleaders for the city of St. Thomas, Merry Christmas to you and your families. But please also remember there's some out there that aren't doing quite as well as us. And we need to, as a city, be the compassionate city that we've always been too. So I ask you all to remember that as Christmas goes by. So Merry Christmas to all and God bless St. Thomas. I'll hand it over now.
Thank you, worship. If there's no further new business items, we'll now move into bylaws. I have a motion that leave be granted to bring in the bylaws. Moved by councillor Peters, seconded by councillor Herbert.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, although it's in favor. Any opposed? Carrie.
I have a motion by councillor Peters, seconded by councillor Herbert, that the bylaws be now read a first time, referred to council and committee of the whole and read a second time.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie.
First bylaw, please.
First bylaw is a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting held on the 18th day of December 2023.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Let's carry next bylaw, please.
Second bylaw is a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of the corporation to a certain agreement between the city and the St. Thomas Economic Development Corporation. This relates to a purchase-to-service agreement.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Let's carry next bylaw, please.
Third bylaw is a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of the corporation to a certain agreement between the city and Fresh Start Support Services. This relates to a grant acknowledgement agreement under the CIP program.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Let's carry next bylaw, please.
Fourth bylaw is a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of the corporation to a certain agreement between the city and Pressbook Construction Limited. This relates to a grant acknowledgement agreement under the CIP program for the property at 63 Elm.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Let's carry next bylaw, please.
Fifth bylaw is a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of the corporation to a certain agreement between the city and Alexander Kirchner. This relates to a residential loan agreement under the Community Improvement Program for the property at 90 Hink Street.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Let's carry next bylaw, please.
Sixth bylaw is a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of the corporation to a certain agreement between the city and the Municipal Property Assessment Corporation. This relates to data sharing and a service agreement.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Let's carry next bylaw, please.
Seventh and final bylaw is a bylaw to appoint an acting mayor being Geoff Kohler, councillor Geoff Kohler, from December 27th to January 4th.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Let's carry. Your worship, I rise and report the successful passing of the seven bylaws.
I have a motion by councillor Peters, seconded by councillor Herbert. That the reported council and committee of the whole on the seven bylaws be received and adopted, the same be read a third time engrossed, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed and numbered.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie.
Next order of business are notices. One notice that the city of St. Thomas is providing notice of its intention to adopt the 2024 operating and capital budgets at its meeting to be held on Monday, January the 8th, 2024 at 5:00 PM. No notices of motion this evening, your worship, at this time, there is a need to move into closed session. I have motioned that this meeting be closed to deal with a matter of a position, plan, procedure, criteria or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality, a proposed or pending disposition of land, a matter of litigation or potential litigation and three personal matters about identifiable individuals. Moved by councillor Baldwin Sands, seconded by councillor Gibson.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, before I call for the vote, I'll give the normal speech. We're about to go into closed session. We have a couple of items we need to deal with tonight in closed session. So I would like to thank all of you for attending tonight, all of you attending online, watching through our streaming. Thank you and please Merry Christmas to all and have fun with your families. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie.